Item number three on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute timeline per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during the agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. There's no, nobody signed in today, so move on to item number four is approval of the agenda. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item number five is consent agenda items. We have the minutes, travel on education, personnel action notices, cellular authorization, and the human services report. Do I have motion approved?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any additions, corrections? Any comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six is routine business. Approval of the claims. Have motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, department head reports. Start with Highway Bryant.
Morning.
Morning.
Start here with Highway nineteen or the Country Club Road. That's been closed for a while. I'm sure many of you all know that, but Bridge in Backfield was delayed with the rain events there in late June. We did end up wrapping that up. Boz is down there currently laying asphalt on and off as they're dealing with a little bit of rain. And following the completion of the asphalt, county crews will be shouldering the roadway once paving is complete. And right around that same time, they'll be reinstalling the guardrail on that south bridge. So hopefully we're wrapped up by that by the end of next week, hoping. White, the city of White has their water and sewer project. Removals have begun in town, but they're going to have Highway twenty-five open as long as we can. I'll update when that officially closes. Same with the city of Aurora. They've been dealing with rain delays over there, too. So they were tentatively going to close that on the fifteenth, but obviously that's been pushed back. Mowing, we're continuing to mow. I know with the rain that we're getting, the grass is growing very well. So keeping up with that. East shed update. The structure is up and the concrete is poured. We have an electrical walkthrough here later this week with the electrical contractor. So doors and electricals, what's left with that. Equipment radio installs started last week. They're around fifty percent complete. We're making sure there are equipments available for them guys when they are here to get their radios in. And lastly, Wednesday, August seventh, we're going to look, be looking at a bid opening for zero-six-one-seventy-two-two-thirty. And that structure is on County Road twenty-seven or forty-second Avenue, mile and a quarter south of fourteen, with a completion date of July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-six. And also, zero-six-two-twenty-seven-two-thirty south of Aurora on two-nineteenth Street. And that was the same completion date of twenty-twenty-six. So just like we had talked in the budget meetings, we didn't feel that having a completion date within twenty-twenty-five would be conducive to get a good bid for getting some of these big grants that we have been awarded by the state to take advantage of getting the best price we can. So push them back to twenty-twenty-six for completion date.
Once the bids are submitted and accepted, they can start, though, if they want to.
Correct. As long as it's approved by the DOT board also. And then, much like we had discussed, this would be, you know, once these are awarded a bid, and then we'd be fronted the seventy-five percent of that by the DOT to get these projects going of the state's share.
Any other questions, Brian?
Thanks.
Sheriff?
Good morning.
Morning.
Just a quick overview with jail statistics. We have fifty, fifty presently in jail. Seventeen are Brookings County inmates, and the rest would be from other counties. The twenty-four-seven program continues to stay busy with forty-five coming in twice a day for the PBTs, eleven on remote breath test, got twelve on SCRAM, and fifty-seven on UAs, and they come in twice a week. Drug court, we got six, UIs, Hope Court one, and DUI court, we have nine. We have six on GPS that we're monitoring. Otherwise, the jail stays busy with other counties coming and going. And US Marshal service is down with their inmates because it's an election year. It's just, it's kind of a political thing. So, but anyway, I'm sure that we'll be getting more US Marshal inmates later. And then I just want to bring your attention. I handed out a flyer for National Night Out, and this is a program that's been around for a period of time. And Brookings has been doing the National Night Out for years in the city of Brookings, and we've always participated in that. And what that is, it's community partnerships between first responders, law enforcement, and the public. And we did a National Night Out last year in Volga. That was a, that was a good success, and they wanted it again. So we'll be doing that over at Volga on August sixth. And we've got a, the valley is offering a meal and a free will donation for Gene Borkland that had a massive stroke, and he is home and stuff. So, and the businesses in the Volga area really stepped up in offering. And so we'll have beanbag tosses and different things. Salvation Army just has a petting zoo. So I just talked to her, and she's going to bring over a petting zoo, too. So it's kind of nice, because Volga is my biggest community outside of the city of Brookings. And you can have more than one National Night Out. Like, let's say, but for the city of Sioux Falls, they have several. You know, they have different neighborhoods of, and they combine it for national. So you can have as many National Night Outs as you want. And it's just good for Volga, because it is the biggest community I have. And so we had a good turnout last year. So they're looking forward to this. The fire department really steps up and does some things for us, too. So anyway, that's all I got unless you have some questions. Oh, fireworks, it was a good year for fireworks. Didn't have many complaints. The complaints we did have was real, actually legal complaints. You know, all the little towns can shoot fireworks to either eleven or twelve, but there's always somebody that don't like that, and they'll call up. But I can't shut them down, because it's legal till, you know, as long as they're doing them in their designated places, it's legal, you know. So, but anyway. Thank you.
Finance?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a quick overview with jail statistics. We have fifty, fifty presently in jail. Seventeen are Brookings County inmates, and the rest would be from other counties. The twenty-four-seven program continues to stay busy with forty-five coming in twice a day for the PBTs, eleven on remote breath test, got twelve on SCRAM, and fifty-seven on UAs, and they come in twice a week. Drug court, we got six, UAs, Hope Court one, and DUI court, we have nine. We have six on GPS that we're monitoring. Otherwise, the jail stays busy with other counties coming and going. And US Marshal service is down with their inmates, because it's an election year. It's just, it's kind of a political thing. So, but anyway, I'm sure that we'll be getting more US Marshal inmates later. And then I just want to bring your attention. I handed out a flyer for National Night Out, and this is a program that's been around for a period of time. And Brookings has been doing the National Night Out for years in the city of Brookings, and we've always participated in that. And what that is, it's community partnerships between first responders, law enforcement, and the public. And we did a National Night Out last year in Volga. That was a, that was a good success, and they wanted it again. So we'll be doing that over at Volga on August sixth. And we've got a, the valley is offering a meal and a free will donation for Gene Borkland that had a massive stroke, and he is home and stuff. So, and the businesses in the Volga area really stepped up in offering. And so we'll have beanbag tosses and different things. Salvation Army just has a petting zoo. So I just talked to her, and she's going to bring over a petting zoo, too. So it's kind of nice, because Volga is my biggest community outside of the city of Brookings. And you can have more than one National Night Out. Like, let's say, but for the city of Sioux Falls, they have several. You know, they have different neighborhoods of, and they combine it for national. So you can have as many National Night Outs as you want. And it's just good for Volga, because it is the biggest community I have. And so we had a good turnout last year. So they're looking forward to this. The fire department really steps up and does some things for us, too. So anyway, that's all I got unless you have some questions. Oh, fireworks, it was a good year for fireworks. Didn't have many complaints. The complaints we did have was real, actually legal complaints. You know, all the little towns can shoot fireworks to either eleven or twelve, but there's always somebody that don't like that, and they'll call up. But I can't shut them down, because it's legal till, you know, as long as they're doing them in their designated places, it's legal, you know. So, but anyway. Thank you.
Finance?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The only thing I have today is to let you know that I'm going to raise the NSF fee from thirty dollars to forty. State law changed allowing that increase. So that will take effect here after today. And that's all I got.
Any questions?
Help me out. What's that jargon mean?
Like insufficient funds.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Misty from weed? No?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Moving on, we do have no scheduled agenda items. So moving on to regular business. First reading of ordinance twenty-four dash zero-five and ordinance providing for the amendment of ordinance twenty-four dash zero-one is the first reading only. Title, note the time and date of the second reading Tuesday, August sixth, at nine AM. That's August sixth at nine AM for second reading. Item B is the first reading of ordinance twenty-four dash zero-six and ordinance authorizing rezoning of OLJ in the northwest quarter of southeast quarter of section eleven, township one-oh-nine north, range fifty west, Midary Township, is the first reading title only. And the date and time of the second reading is Tuesday, August thirteenth, at five-thirty. The second reading will be Tuesday, August thirteenth, at five-thirty. Moving on to item C on the agenda is action to approve resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-six, a plat of lot one of Jacobson addition in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of section twenty-six, township one-ten north, range fifty-one west of the fifth primorion, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Richard from zoning is not here today. He did call in and tell me that all the, all the plats were approved unanimously by the zoning board. So is there any other comments? Any other comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is action to approve resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-seven, a plat of lots one through ten in block one and lots one through nine in block two, all of homesteads of the Marsh addition and the government lots two and three in section fifteen, township one-twelve north, range forty-seven west of Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any further comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E is action to approve resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-eight, a plat of blocks one, two, three, four, and five, Berkland addition located in a portion of government lot two in the southwest quarter of section twenty-eight, township one-oh-nine north, range fifty west of the fifth primorion, all in Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any further comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E is action to approve resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-eight, a plat of blocks one, two, three, four, and five, Berkland addition located in a portion of government lot two in the southwest quarter of section twenty-eight, township one-oh-nine north, range fifty west of the fifth primorion, all in Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F on the agenda is action to approve resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-nine, a resolution approving annexation of territories by the city of Aurora. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any comments?
This was an annexation approved by the Aurora City Council back on June tenth. And so then this comes to the commission now for approval.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G is action to approve resolution number twenty-four dash thirty, a bridge improvement grant program resolution authorizing submission of applications. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion and second. Comments?
Three of these, the top three, were submitted last year, and we were unsuccessful. And talking with the DOT, they suggested that we attempt to try these again. And we also added that final one, the zero-six-three-oh-seven-one-forty. And these would be for preliminary engineering grants to get the process rolling and efforts to down the road apply for a replacement grant for these structures.
Okay. Any questions, Brian? Brian, are these on that point system through the bridge program?
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
So there's no guarantee that any of these could be accepted?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H, action to approve agreement number twenty-four dash sixty-one, the Brookings City and County Government Center custodial contract general specifications. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Comments?
This is a two-year contract for custodial services for this building. It went through the city's bid process. Service master, building and maintenance out of Sioux Falls, submitted the low bid. This is a new, different contractor than we, than what we currently have been using the last several years.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I, action to approve RFP number three of the historic courthouse roof replacement project. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any comments?
This is actually a deduct from our project of nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. So the contractor is going to remove some prefinished sheet metal counter flashing from the parapet walls and apply some, basically a synthetic rubber in its place. The architect did go, this does not, you know, negate any warranty or anything like that. The architect has reviewed this. We needed to move forward, so it, so move forward with it. Since it was a deduct, I think some of that work has probably already started, just to kind of keep the project moving along. So, but here is for your official approval.
Okay. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item J is action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expenses incurred and reimbursement made to the Brookings County in the amount of eighty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. Receipt number zero-zero-six-eight-six-three-zero-one to general line three-zero-one dash four dash one-six-one dash four-two-nine-three. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Comments?
This was money that we received from our insurance company as, it was kind of some holdback money from, insurance from the derecho event for, I think this was maybe from the brew shop. But we need to now supplement this money. And then we actually just received it not too terribly long ago. So receipt this in to help cover the costs that we've seen from the brew shop and now the new east shed going up.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item K, action to approve a cash transfer from the Highway Road and Bridge Fund two-oh-one to the County Building Fund three-oh-one in the amount of eighty-three-thousand-six-eighty-five-sixty-one. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion and second. Comments?
This goes along with that automatic supplement. The money was actually received into the Highway Fund two-oh-one and then, but our expenses are coming out of three-oh-one, our capital projects fund. So we have to move that cash from two-oh-one over to three-oh-one.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item L is action to approve a fireworks display on Saturday, August twenty-fourth, located at forty-two Oakwood Shoreline Drive, contingent on notifying the Bruce Fire Department and Sheriff's Department the week prior to the display. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any comments?
No, just a fireworks request, just kind of as stated. As part of that motion, I did include that they would let the Bruce Fire Department know and the sheriff's office know, too, just in case we do run into a stint here where we get some dry weather and we need to make some adjustments, since that's a little ways out yet. And I'll get this on my calendar and make sure I follow up as well.
Is there a time in the request?
It would just be at dusk.
At dusk. Okay. Sheriff, any concerns? Any other comments?
Do we, you had complaints over the weekend about too late. Do we want to put a, an hourly cap on it to say no later than, like, no later to like ten-thirty or ten o'clock? I don't, I don't know.
What would you recommend?
Well, it's, doesn't really get dark almost until eleven. No later than...
Say eleven o'clock would be good, yeah. Because it doesn't really get dark until pushing ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock now, so.
Okay. The reason I'm concerned, I think, is because of the residents nearby there.
Right. And it's, that's going to be, there's going to be a lot of people there on the lake. It's, there's going to be a lot of neighbors. And so if we can keep it down to eleven o'clock, or later than eleven o'clock, I think that might be prudent.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item M, action to approve request to fill vacancy for a full-time correctional officer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have motion and approval and second. Any comments?
Just due to a resignation.
Okay. No further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item N is action to approve request to fill vacancy for, for a part-time correctional officer. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and approval. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, department director's report.
The veteran service officer report for June. One-hundred-and-fifty-nine veterans assisted, three outreach events, and four DAV or beta rides were given in June. As part of my report, I did include the draft twenty-twenty-five provisional budget document. As you know, we've kind of been working, we've worked on that, had the public, or the, the budget hearings back in June about a month ago. And so barring any other significant changes between now and September third, that will probably be the provisional budget that will be presented for approval at that point. So at this point, we kind of give it to the finance office, and we just kind of wait and see. But if there's anything, any major change that's come in, we'll notify you between now and then. An update on the roof project over at the courthouse. They did, as part of my report, too, there was an observation report from the architects. That was as of July second. They were seventy-five percent complete. They're actually at substantial completion. Here at ten-thirty this morning, we're going to go over and do kind of a punch list walkthrough of that project. So they're getting really close. There's one small area on the west side. We'll probably see another RFP for that issue with accessing some drains off one portion on the west side. So I know there's some things there that still need to be done. And I think there's an RFP pending some cost information from the contractor yet. So waiting on that. The schedule for achievement days was also included as part of my report. That is coming up July twenty-ninth through August first. The barbecue is on August first, that Thursday. I know at the last meeting, we were talking about membership dues, noting that, you know, there's the possibility with, of the, our state dues possibly going up. I did reach out to Naco, because they had indicated that their dues were going up. They're only going up forty-nine dollars. So two-six-eighty-eight annually for twenty-twenty-five. So I did hear back from them. You did receive a save the date for hobo day, which is coming up on Saturday, October twelfth this year. So mark your calendars. Continuing to work with First District on the CDBG grant, a couple of pay applications have come through. What that process looks like is we, the county will pay the bills and then get reimbursed back from the state. So I've been working with the finance office to create a budget line within the commission budget for that. And then when we get reimbursed back for that CDBG grant, then we'll just automatic, do automatic supplements to offset those costs. So if you're, if you're watching the commission budget closely here as we pay those bills, it may look like it's way in the red until we get some of that money reimbursed back from the state. But that's how that, those grant dollars work. And like I said, I continue to work with First District on that. Believe it or not, it's probably time to start talking about department head reviews. I've kind of laid out a proposed timeline. Nothing that the commission needs to be aware of until we, you get the evaluations, and then you turn them back into HR, not till
And July 10th, I did have a Conservation District meeting. They're making big plans for the, looking forward to the tour and getting some things done at the Conservation District. They're wrapping up all their plantings. They got, it's interesting to hear how many acres they actually plant. And they got a few fall seedings, but they're already ordering trees and fabric and stuff preparing for next year. So it was a good meeting. That's all I have. Item 12 is Executive Sessions, accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, Presidency One Personnel. Do I have a motion to enter?
It's all moved.
Tag it.
Motion of second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.